Calling to order, the August seventh, two thousand twenty-four city council meeting. Please rise and join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk will now call the roll.
Councilmember Grimmer is absent. Councilmember Hood?
Here.
Councilmember Luke?
Here.
Councilmember Luther?
Here.
Councilmember Norris?
Here.
Councilmember Patel?
Here.
Councilmember Patel?
Here.
Councilmember Washi?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. We have seven out of eight council members present. Uh, councilmember Grimmer is out of town with his family this week. Uh, next item on the agenda would be agenda approval. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Approved.
Second.
Agenda approval is, is motion and seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 Any discussion? Changes? All in favor say aye again.
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? I see none. The agenda is approved for this evening. Any public comments? We have none this evening. Next item on the agenda is the approval of amendments. Um, I'll ask for approval of both sets of amendments, amendments from the regular city council meeting July seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four, and then the amendments from the mid-year budget meeting July twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Patel made the motion to approve the amendments, uh, seconded by councilmember Patel. Any changes? Deletions, friendly amendments? I see none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? I see none. The approval of the amendments are taken. Next item on the agenda, we're gonna move forward to recess for a public hearing. And this is regarding the Bridgeton Hilltop to establish a community improvement district.
So, um, if we rec- uh, recognize is the word I'm looking for. If we'd recognize John Jokas from my office, please to give an overview.
Mr. Jokas, please come forward.
Good evening. Nice to see you all. We're here regarding the Bridgeton Hilltop Community Improvement District, a proposed community improvement district pursuant to sections fourteen oh one to fifteen seventy-one of the revised statutes of Missouri. The purpose of this public hearing is to satisfy the statutory requirement under the CID Act that, uh, notice be afforded to the general public and to, uh, affected property owners, which, which it has been, uh, both by mail and publication, and to invite any of those, uh, affected, uh, landowners or the general public to appear and provide any comments and to speak on, uh, on behalf of or, or, uh, offer any comments against the project. Um, I believe you all are familiar with the project. I, I won't delve to go into any details because we've, I think, covered it in prior meetings. Also, here this evening is Doug Stone from Lewis Rice Law Firm, uh, who is counsel to the CID petitioner. I believe he's here to answer any questions. Uh, our firm obviously is here on behalf of the city and answer, happy to answer any questions. I, I think that the next, probably statutory step is to recognize Mr. Stone and then, uh, to see if there's any, uh, public comments.
Thanks, John.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Mayor, members of the governing body. I'm Doug Stone. I'm attorney in the Kansas City office of Lewis Rice. And I just wanna say before I start that one of the, um-
Sir, can you, uh, give the city clerk your name again, please?
Sure, excuse me. Douglas, D.O.U.G.L.A.S., Stone, S.T.O.N.E.
Thank you.
Thank you. I was just gonna comment on the fact that, uh, I'm happy to be here, both for this project, but also because on the Kansas City side of the state, we don't have a White Castle. And, um, I, um, grew up with White Castle. Every time I come to the eastern side of the state, I, um, spend my tax dollars at your White Castle, and so, um,
Thank you.
Uh, I intend to go there after our meeting. So thank you for the opportunity to be here, to talk to you about this project. Uh, as John said, uh, we're here tonight to talk about the CID petition. I know you've heard about this general project overall before, but just in a couple of sentences, um, over at Palmier Boulevard, it's, uh, uh, the old Kmart, uh, the Mercado, which is being renovated, and a small building, a small, uh, pad site, uh, to the west of the site that is proposed for a new seven thousand square foot multi-tenant building. The CID itself, uh, would be declared a blighted area. There's been a blight study that's been presented, I believe, probably in terms of the three fifty-three hearing that you had, but also is tasked as part of the CID petition, and this is a formality. I asked the city clerk to please admit the blight study into the record, if you would please. Uh, in addition to the finding of blight, the CID is all about generating revenue and using that revenue to assist in defray the cost of a project. This particular CID is proposed to have two revenue sources, a sales tax, uh, and a special assessment, and the special assessment corresponds to the tax abatement that's being provided through the three fifty-three, so from a payment perspective, they're paying no more than or less than they would have paid but for these programs, and it takes a portion of the incremental increase in the taxes and then allows you to monetize that and get some money for the project. Feel like I'm babbling on. I, I, I hope that that's enough of an explanation. If anybody has any questions, I'm certainly glad to stand for, stand for those.
Counsel? I see none. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any questions of Mr. Jokas?
If you'd like to just invite any members of the public who have the opportunity, uh, who would like to hear about the opportunity.
I've got one question from councilmember Luther.
Yes, thank you. And my understanding is that part of a CID is the formation of a board of a director?
Yes.
Yeah, could you describe that a little bit, how that functions?
Uh, thank you. That's an excellent question. So, um, unlike something like a TIF plan, I know you've experienced those before. A TIF plan is simply you draw a boundary, you capture that revenue, and you redirect that incremental increase to revenue. A CID is a district, an actual political subdivision, just like, not as grand as the city of Bridgeton, it is a political subdivision. It's officers or public officials that gives it the authority to impose a tax in the first place. Uh, CID is governed by a board of directors. In CIDs where, and there are neighborhood-based CIDs, where the directors are elected at large by the residents of the district, and then there are more commercially-driven CIDs where no one lives in the district, and in that case, the, um, directors are elected, are elected by the property owners. Uh, we have provisions in all particular CID, and it's not uncommon throughout the state for the city to have seats on that board, and we've got that here as well. And, uh, what would happen is, will be a slate submitted. It'll have the requisite balance of people. It would come before the city clerk, who would then look at it, send it to the council, and the council would then, you know, approve or comment on the slate. Uh, on a almost annual basis, uh, once a couple of years have gone by, CID board is staggered. And so there's a number of people with a certain year term and then another year term, and so every couple of years, they're filling those seats again. Is that answer your question?
Yes, thank you very much, and it's good to know that we have representation on that board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Any members of the public would like to come forward and speak in favor of this community improvement district? Please do so. I see none. Any members in the public would like to come forward and speak against this community improvement district? Please come forward. Okay, I see none. No further questions? This public hearing comes to an end. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is letter J, permits waivers and appeal requests. First item is liquor license for Her Place cigar. Councilmember Luther?
Thank you, mayor. I move for second consideration of a new liquor license request for Her Place cigar.
Second.
Oh, sorry, go ahead. At three fifty McKelvey Road, liquor buy the drink Monday through Saturday and Sunday sales buy the drink.
Second.
Okay, motions made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any nays? I see none. Please proceed.
I approve the approval of the liquor license application for Her Place cigar located at three five one O McKelvey Road without a requirement that the license holder sell food.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Mr. Still, thank you.
Yes, um, is this one that we needed to create, uh, an amendment to, to make it match, uh, St. Louis County ordinances?
I'm gonna recognize the city attorney.
Thank you.
Uh, the, the way Ms. Luther, uh, phrased the, uh, the motion is, is acceptable. In other words, uh, in her motion, she said, without requiring the sale of food, it's the sale of prepared food that would put it in conflict with the county, uh, indoor air quality ordinance. It's the, the, uh, county indoor air quality ordinance prohibits the, uh, smoking of cigars in, uh, in a, in a location where there's prepared food, and so that's, that's how we would be addressing it.
So, her, her change or amendment suggestion is to not allow any food to be served there at all?
Not require it, yes.
So they could not sell any kind of food, not even packaged food then, right?
I mean, we're not prohibiting them from selling food because we don't enforce the county indoor air quality ordinance. Now, if they prepared food, they'd probably have a problem with the county, so we're not requiring them to, to, you know, typically, in my experience, when the city has issued a buy the drink license, the city has required the license holder to sell food in the establishment. What the city's code says is that the city council has the authority to require the sale of food, and so this motion makes it clear, if it passes, that the city's not requiring the applicant to sell food.
Okay, and I did discuss this with, with Mayor Hein earlier, uh, and just kinda curious how we were gonna change this or make sure it was okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any further questions, comments? I see none. All in favor? I'm gonna call, uh, have the clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Hood?
Aye.
Councilmember Luke?
Aye.
Councilmember Luther?
Aye.
Councilmember Norris?
Aye.
Councilmember Patel?
Aye.
Councilmember Patel?
Is this on just the amendment?
It's on the approval. The motion was to approve it without requiring food.
So it's not an amendment?
It's one motion.
Okay, one motion. Aye then.
Councilmember Washi?
Aye.
Okay, by a vote of seven to nothing, the liquor license is approved for Her Place cigar. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item is another liquor license, um, consideration. This is for barrel blend wine and spirits. Councilmember Luther?
Thank you, mayor. I move for first consideration of a new liquor license request for barrel blends wine and spirits at twelve one three three St. Charles Rock Road, wine tasting liquor license.
Second.
Motions made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? I see none. Any further discussion? Okay, this is first consideration.
A move to table?
Yep.
Second.
Okay, motions made to table. This liquor license and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Liquor license is tabled. Next item on the agenda is K, and this is for bid, sodium chloride. Councilmember Luther?
Thank you, mayor. I move to consider the bid for sodium chloride, Compass Minerals America, Inc., an additional supplier.
Second.
Motions made and seconded to consider the sodium chloride bid. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? I see none. Proceed.
I just wanted to mench- uh, just wanted to mention that this came before us as a bid at our last meeting, and it has since been withdrawn. There was a transposition of numbers, and that's why it's coming before us again as a bid.
Sure. City attorney, please.
So, um, Robert will correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what we need to do here is, so this, this bid was approved in error at the last meeting because, um, it was understood at the time that it was the low bid. As it turned out, it wasn't the low bid. And so what Public Works is asking for this evening is actually a motion to withdraw the bid that was approved at the last meeting. Um, so if it's, if, if, if the council agrees with that, it would, it would probably be good to withdraw the motion that's on the, the floor, rescind the second, and then have a new motion to, uh, withdraw the bid that was approved at the last meeting.
Okay, councilmember Luther?
Okay, so the first piece is to withdraw the bid.
Withdraw your motion.
Withdraw my motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was-
You made a motion to consider.
I just made a motion to consider.
Then, then all you need, sorry, I misunderstood. Thanks, Karen. So then all you need is the motion to withdraw the bid approved at the last meeting.
All right, I make a motion to withdraw the bid approved at the last meeting for sodium chloride, Compass Minerals America.
Second.
Motions made and seconded to withdraw the bid for sodium chlorify- chlor- sodium chlor- chlor- chloride, uh, made at the last, uh, council meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I see none. Proceed.
That's over.
Okay.
I think we have a motion to approve Cargill as the correct one. It's the second sentence on, uh, what's showing on your screen. This will be correcting it, and this is the correct, uh, bid approval.
Second page in the packet.
It's not on our agenda, is it?
It's the, it's the second page in your, I think, or at least in mine, in the packet.
So, I move to approve Cargill, Inc. as an additional supplier of chlori- sodium chloride for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, in accordance with their bid of June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Motions made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I see none. The bid is approved. Next item on the agenda is perfection of bills, bill number six four four six. Councilmember Luther again.
Thank you, mayor. I move for a second consideration of bill number sixty-four forty-six. Second.
Motions made and seconded. For a second reading of bill number six four four six. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I see none. Proceed.
An ordinance authorizing the city of Bridgeton, Missouri to issue its taxable industrial revenue bonds, one one nine seven four and one one nine seven eight, Palmier Avenue Project Series twenty twenty-four in a principal amount not to exceed twenty-three million for the purpose of providing funds to pay the costs of acquiring and constructing an industrial development project in the city, approving a plan for the project, and authorizing the mayor to enter into certain agreements and take certain other actions in connection with the issuance of the bonds. Move that bill six four four six becomes ordinance twenty-four dash thirty-four.
Second.
Motions made for bill number six four four six to become ordinance twenty-four dash thirty-four. And seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Roll call.
Discussion? Discussion? Any discussion? Oh, councilmember Luther?
Yes, I wondered if we could simp- just describe briefly a breakdown of that twenty-three million, and also talk about who's paying for that, because I think if, if we could answer that question. I know it, it's in two pieces, I believe.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening. John Jokas again from Hush Blackwell. So, the, um, twenty-three million is the face amount of these bonds, which are special obligation leasehold revenue bonds. So, the way that the chapter one hundred, uh, what's known, generally known as a chapter one hundred transaction works in Missouri is the municipality issues bonds, but they're not a debt of the, of the city, it's important to note. These are special obligation bonds paid solely from the leasehold revenues from the property itself. So, uh, in this case, the city acquires a leasehold interest in the property from the developer. So developer leases to the city, the city pays twenty-three million for that. That twenty-three million is funded with twenty-three million the city gets on the same day from the developer who leases it back. So there is no, other, other than the, uh, minimal payment of trustees fees, et cetera. There, there should be no cash impact to the city or to the developer. Uh, this is solely done to effectuate tax abatement as is, um, allowed for and provided for pursuant to chapter one hundred. These, these are done quite commonly throughout the state of Missouri.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Thank you. Any further discussion, questions, comments? The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Luther?
Aye.
Councilmember Norris?
Aye.
Councilmember Patel?
Aye.
Councilmember Patel?
Aye.
Councilmember Washi?
Aye.
Councilmember Hood?
Aye.
Councilmember Luke?
Aye.
By a vote of seven to nothing, bill number six four four six becomes ordinance number twenty-four dash thirty-four. Next item on the agenda, perfection of bills, number six four four seven. And that would be councilmember Luther again.
Thank you, mayor. Lu- move for a second consideration of bill number six four four seven. Second.
Motions made and seconded for second consideration of bill number six four four seven. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I see none. Proceed.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Bridgeton, Missouri determining that the one one nine seven four dash one one nine eight two Palmier Avenue redevelopment area, the area, is a blighted area as defined in chapter three fifty-three, revised statutes of Missouri, approving the one one nine seven four dash one one nine eight two Palmier Avenue Development Plan dated as of May sixth, twenty twenty-four for the area, authorizing tax abatement for the area, authorizing the execution of a development agreement by and among the city, Savoy Develop Hilltop Develop Redevelopment Corporation, Clayton, Maryland, LLC, and Bridgeton Hilltop Community Improvement District, and directing and authorizing city officials to take certain actions related to the same. Move that bill number six four four seven become ordinance number two four three five.
Second.
Motions made, the bill number six four four seven become ordinance number twenty-four dash thirty-five and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Roll call.
We're gonna have discussion first. If anybody has any questions or comments, we have councilmember Luther.
Yes, if, if we could, to have a kind of a thumbnail of the structure of that tax abatement.
Yes, certainly.
Thank you, once again.
Good evening again. Uh, so, so, and I, I, let me back up. So we just discussed the chapter one hundred. The chapter one hundred, the taxes, the taxes that it abates, or, and actually, it's, it's actually an exemption that it provides, is for the, uh, sales tax on construction materials. This is a companion bill for the same project, obviously, under chapter three fifty-three, which affords real property tax abatement. So, the, the first bill was to accomplish the construction material sales tax exemption. So the project will essentially pay less in, uh, or actually should pay very little in, if any, uh, sales tax on construction materials, because those were exempted per chapter one hundred. Uh, this bill is for a chapter three fifty-three program, which will allow for real property tax abatement on the project for a period of, uh, twenty-five years. Does that-
Yeah.
Can, can you explain a little bit about the, uh, number, the number of years and the percentage?
Yes, certainly. So it's a hundred percent, uh, for the first, a hundred percent of the base, uh, for the first ten years, and, uh, for the next fifteen years, it's fifty percent of, of the total taxes.
Any further questions, comments? I see none. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Norris?
Aye.
Councilmember Patel?
Aye.
Councilmember Patel?
Aye.
Councilmember Washi?
Aye.
Councilmember Hood?
Aye.
Councilmember Luke?
Aye.
Councilmember Luther?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is, uh, second consideration of bill number six four four eight. Councilmember Luther again.
Thank you, mayor. I move for second consideration of bill six four four eight.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded for second consideration of bill number six four four eight. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I see none. Proceed.
An ordinance approving a petition to establish the Bridgeton Hilltop Community Improvement District and to authorize a sales tax and special assessment pursuant to section sixty-seven point one four zero one dash sixty-seven point one five seven one of the revised statutes of Missouri as amended, creating the Bridgeton Hilltop Community Improvement District as a political subdivision, directing the city clerk of the city of Bridgeton to report the creation of the district to the Missouri Department of Economic Development, finding that the district is in a blighted area, and directing and authorizing city officials to take certain actions related to the same. Move that bill number sixty-four forty-eight become ordinance number twenty-four dash thirty-six.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded for bill number six four four eight to become ordinance number twenty-four dash thirty-six. Discussion? Any questions, comments? Any further? Okay. I see none. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Patel?
Aye.
Councilmember Patel?
Aye.
Councilmember Washi?
Aye.
Councilmember Hood?
Aye.
Councilmember Luke?
Aye.
Councilmember Luther?
Aye.
Councilmember Norris?
Aye.
Aye.
By a vote of seven to nothing, bill number six four four eight becomes ordinance twenty-four dash thirty-six. Next item on the agenda is second consideration of bill number sixty-four fifty. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Luther?
Yes, move for second consideration of bill number sixty-four five zero.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded for second consideration of bill number sixty-four fifty. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I see none. Proceed.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Bridgeton, Missouri authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute a consent for entry and access to River Woods Park and Trail property substantially in the form attached heretofore as exhibit A between the city of Bridgeton, Missouri and the West Lake landfill OU dash one and OU dash three respondents in order for the West Lake landfill OU dash one and OU dash three respondents to access the property, property as more particularly described in the agreement. Move that bill number sixty-four fifty become ordinance number twenty-four dash thirty-seven.
Second.
Motions made and seconded, the bill number sixty-four fifty become ordinance twenty-four dash thirty-seven. Any discussion? I see none. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Patel?
Aye.
Councilmember Washi?
Aye.
Councilmember Hood?
Aye.
Councilmember Luke?
Aye.
Councilmember Luther?
Aye.
Councilmember Norris?
Aye.
Councilmember Patel?
Aye.
By a vote of seven to nothing, bill number sixty-four fifty becomes ordinance twenty-four dash thirty-seven. Next item on the agenda is consideration of new bills. We're gonna change this up a, a little bit. First consideration of bill number sixty-four fifty-one. Councilmember Patel?
Thank you, mayor. Move for first reading of bill sixty-four fifty-one.
Second.
Motions made and seconded for first consideration of bill number sixty-four fifty-one. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I see none. Please proceed.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Bridgeton, Missouri amending chapter one fifteen, article nine, section one fifteen point three two zero, tuition to increase the reimbursement limit for each employee per calendar year from one thousand dollars to three thousand five hundred dollars. Move to table, bill sixty-four fifty-one.
Second.
Motions made and seconded to table, bill number sixty-four fifty-one. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I see none. Bill number sixty-four fifty-one is tabled. Next item is first consideration of bill number sixty-four fifty-two.
Thank you, ma-
Councilmember Washi?
Thank you, mayor. I move, uh, for first reading of bill number sixty-four fifty-two.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded for first consideration of bill number sixty-four fifty- Motion is made and seconded for first consideration of Bill Number 6452. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I see none. Please proceed.
An ordinance of the city, of the City Council of the city of Bridgeton, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute agreements substantially in the form attached heretofore with Parkscape, Parkscape Solutions and Play-in Park Structures, the park improvements at Gentry Park in an amount of $578,817.48. I move to table, Bill Number 6452. Second.
Motion's made and seconded to table, Bill Number 6452. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I see none. Bill Number 6452 is table. Next item, no discussion items. Next item is the attorney's report.
I have nothing to report, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Next item is council communication. I'm gonna start with Councilmember Washi this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, only thing I really wanted to talk about today is, uh, yesterday I was able to make it by Lambert for their, um, Consolidated Terminal, um, uh, program presentation I ended up giving. Uh, it was interesting to see exactly what's going on with everything and how they're gonna be moving around a lot of the roadways and really kind of bringing a, uh, what, 50, 60, 70-ish year old structure to, uh, be what it needs to be, uh, nowadays. Uh, there are definitely some concerns about the project. Of course, being in Bridgeton, a lot of us, um, are very aware with the, uh, leftovers from the Manhattan project and how this could possibly impact. The good news is, it doesn't look like they're gonna be modifying, uh, runways or anything to that end. It's mainly gonna be dealing with the actual terminal side. Um, and it also sounds like they're gonna be fixing a couple issues with drainage that's been going on there. Uh, so, this is just a very beginning, uh, the very beginning stages of everything. Um, any Bridgeton residents that are interested, um, you can go to flystl.com, and there's a big banner at the top of the page you can click on, and you can either see the presentation I saw yesterday, um, in PDF, or I'm sorry, in, um, PowerPoint form. Uh, tomorrow, or I'm sorry, next week, you'll be able to see a video of the presentation I saw yesterday. Or if you really wanna fall asleep, you can download the 1,427-page document and read details about everything going on. Um, I know later on, I'm planning on going through that document a little bit, not every single page, uh, but I kinda wanna see what they're planning on doing to mitigate factors that could deal with, um, dust and building supplies whenever they knock down this old abandoned structures, uh, that are closer to where, uh, you had the Coldwater Creek incident and everything at. So, thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Sattell?
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing at this time. Thank you.
Councilmember Patel?
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing.
Councilmember Luther?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few things. First, I wanted to talk a little bit about the past. We'll start in the past and we'll, we'll move forward. So, we did have a Ward Three meeting, was it a week ago?
July 24th.
July 24th, a couple weeks ago. And it was very well attended. This place was packed. It was like a party here. So, I wanna thank everybody for coming. We had a lively discussion, a lot of people here, and a lot of staff. I wanna thank all the staff that were here. So, we're very well attended. I wanted to mention that moving forward as of 2025, and you'll see this in the calendar, the 2025 calendar, Gretchen and I have decided to move those meetings from 7:00 to 9:00 PM to 6:30 to 7:30 PM, thinking it just gets people, it's just a little easier for people to get out and about, especially when it's dark outside. I know some people don't like to drive at night. So, you'll see that in the upcoming calendar. They will still be quarterly. We'll still have quarterly meetings. Wanted to mention, the, the subcommittees are firing up of the City Council. The Stormwater Impact met tonight. Cove meets on 8/21. That's the Code Ordinance Violation Enforcement Subcommittee that I talk about all the time, and that I chair, that will be here on the 21st at 6:00. We have a Professional Development and Council Rules Subcommittee that will be meeting on August 28th. And then, we have our Business Plus Community Partnership Subcommittee that will meeting, be, meeting sometime in September. So, those are, uh, firing up, getting going, and I think all in the best interests of Bridgeton. The, I, I do wanna talk about a couple of things. I had the, I'm an ex-officio for the Design and Review Board, and we met last night in this very room, and wanted to share with you some exciting things coming to the Rock Road, to Bridgeton. So, this is a rendering of Smalls Sliders, and I, I have a bunch up here. I'll leave them up here. So, this is a, what is it called? Convenient Fast Food? There's a, there's a code for that. Anyway, there's a little patio out here, but they're serving, I don't know if you can see it, it's a container concept. And it will be at what we're calling The Wedge. And The Wedge is now, this, I call it The Starbucks, 'cause I'm there all the time. That piece of property that's had a lot of things on it. It fits beautifully in there. Uh, the, the, the gentleman that presented was really very nice. I think this is a terrific addition, and we are the very first Small Slides to open in the St. Louis region, with others dotted throughout. So, I'll leave that up here. I hope you're as happy as I am to see that. That will open December 2024, so coming up pretty soon. And also, I got the okay to share the elevation of something we were talking about, which is the Hilltop Plaza redevelopment. And so, we have four wonderful stores coming in. Can't wait for that to happen. Wanted to, uh, show the, I'll leave that up here if you wanna see them. Whack everything up here. And also, wanted to thank the attorneys present for discussion about the Bridgeton Hilltop redevelopment project. I think you can see, this is the binder we have for that. People say it took, it's taken a long time for this to come to fruition, and it sure has. But we're, we'll all be celebrating the day when all of that opens, so that's wonderful. And last, this was at my place tonight. Please speak into the microphone, so I'm trying. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Luke?
Thank you, Mayor. Anything I was gonna say was just covered by Councilmember Luther, so I'm good.
Okay. Uh, let's see. Councilmember Hood? No, Councilmember Norris?
Are you scared, Mayor? Thank you. I appreciate it. I, I really don't have anything. Uh, uh, Mayor, uh, you can give the news. And, um, I just wanna thank, um, the administration for the Savoy Properties, uh, project. This opportunity took many years. Previous mayor worked very hard, uh, for this development. Mayor Heine has completed this project for our city and residents. I'm very happy to be part of this development. Bridgeton is back. Our future is bright. Um, and I just wanna have one thing. Can you start the Marshalls right away? And we're gonna get a Skechers, and a Ross, and a Burlington. So, you know, we, they're, they're holding their money, so if you can get those bulldozers in tomorrow, we've got a lot of people waiting. So, I do wanna thank you for choosing our city. We, we are a very special city, and so, uh, I think we're gonna be anxious, and this is gonna beget a lot of other stores. I really feel that. So, look at some other property. So, all right. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Hood?
Okay. Well, relative to the Council Rules Subcommittee, uh, it's going to be on the 28th of August, and I'd like to start at 6 o'clock in the evening, if that's acceptable to everybody else. So, if you need a time change, or if there's something comes up, just get ahold of me, and, and we'll be as flexible as possible to get you in there. I'm not set in stone at 6:00 by any stretch, so if we need to move it back to accommodate, that's fine. And then, I, I wanted to let you know that a longstanding resident, Mr. Bob T. Han and his wife Bee, moved out of the city on Monday, uh, moving into assisted living. But Mr. and Mrs. T. Han have been a major part of this community, and he went kicking and screaming. He did not wanna move. But it's better for him, and it's, he's gonna continue being close to his family, and I wanna thank him for all of his hard work. He served on many, many commissions, including the Police Commission, and we're a better, better city for his participation. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I got one last comment.
All right. Staff reports. I'll start with Mr. Gunn, Director of Public Works.
Uh, nothing at, at this time.
Mr. Booker?
I have nothing to report, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. Chief Masadi?
Just a quick reminder, um, on August 16th, we'll have the cop on a rooftop, uh, in the morning. That's at Dunkin' Donuts on the, uh, Rock Road, so we're looking forward to that event. Also, I know that I had announced, we do have a start date of a new officer next week, so I will have him at the next council meeting to, uh, introduce him to all of you. Thank you.
Parks and Recreation Director, Brendan Kane?
Wanted to let everybody know, the Fall Activity Guide...
No, I'm sorry. Was it for the police?
No.
Okay. Sorry.
It's okay. Fall Activity Guide is online now, and we hope to have hard copies out, uh, by the end of next week. And then, also, Bill 6452 that was up for first reading tonight for the Gentry Park improvements, that's, uh, from a grant that we were awarded, the municipal park grant, uh, last winter, uh, in the amount of $465,000. And then, we'll be applying for Phase Two here in a couple of weeks, uh, and that will be to finalize the Gentry Park improvements. Um, the first phase is the restroom renovation, accessible trail improvements, um, and then, the second one will be, uh, the main playground, the inclusive playground.
Any questions?
I did have one for that.
Okay. Councilmember Sattell?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I had a citizen that lives over by Alabash Park, and I was just kinda curious when that park gets to start thinking about his redesigning the playground equipment. I know it's gonna probably also include the lake and other things like that. Maybe you got a timeline on that that we can share.
That'll be something we'll discuss as far as the budget with the five-year plan.
All right.
So, it's, it's up for discussion.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. My report. I'll try and keep it short. First, uh, and foremost, uh, Councilmember Norris notified me earlier today that Mr. Tom Collier Senior has passed away. Um, so, um, please stay tuned for further developments and, uh, visitation. I know that, uh, him and his brother Bob were, uh, you know, in business together for years, and, uh, you know, prior to them, it was their parents. So, it's a long, long, uh, standing family business here in Bridgeton. So, uh, our condolences and prayers to all the family members. Please keep them in your prayers also. Um, you brought up White Castle. We used to have two in Bridgeton. We had one over on, uh, Lindberg also. They closed about, I don't know, seven or eight years ago, I think, maybe longer. But, uh, yeah. But now, uh, hopefully, we're gonna have two Chick-fil-A's in Bridgeton. So, um, the only municipality in St. Louis County that will have two. Uh, Chief Ushry, uh, thanks for being with us tonight. If you have anything you need to talk about after the meeting, please let me know. Police Officer, thank you for being with us also. And, uh, audience, always a pleasure to see you here and taking an interest in, in your municipal government. Um, I had the pleasure of attending both Wards Three and Wards Two, uh, meetings over the past couple weeks since the last council meeting. They were both very well attended. And, uh, Ward Two, uh, they had the chairman and the Fire, Fire Protection Board, uh, Pattonville Fire Protection Board, uh, Bill Esterlein that spoke, uh, gave a, gave a nice, uh, talk for about 10 minutes, 15 minutes. And then, of course, always Chief Masadi is there, and he introduced, uh, the, the, our newest captain. Uh, and, uh, it's always nice that there's a presence and that the, uh, residents know that the police are there for them and happy to answer any questions. Thank you. Thank you both departments for being there. Um, on the next agenda, um, you'll see, uh, an ordinance that I created, uh, forming a Economic Development Commission. So, please, uh, read that when you get it, and, uh, hopefully, we can get that passed and, and have a first meeting, maybe in September or early October, uh, of the members. Uh, that's all I have. Um, I always appreciate your patience with me. I'm still in the learning curve phase here. Uh, so, uh, but we get through it. Um, we have a lot of good people up here, uh, that serve you, so, uh, thank them. Don't thank me. All right. Motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I see none. Meeting adjourned.